So I'd like to go ahead and call this special electronic private public hearing session number two to order, and I'll just make a quick one paragraph statement. Yeah, we'll call. So good evening to everyone. We are convened today as a special of the board for the purpose of gathering public comment and input related to the potential renaming of George Mason High School and Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. We are perceived as we have since the spring. Under emergency ordinance TO 20-12, which was adopted by the city council on April 6, 2020, this emergency ordinance allows for the school board to meet electronically in order to address continuity of operations associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. As with our other electronic meetings, this meeting is open for the public to view the meeting via FCCPS's YouTube channel. Ms. Goodell, call the role, please.
Yes, thank you. Dr. Anderson?
Yep.
Dr. Dimick?
Here.
Ms. Downs?
Here.
I don't see Ms. Litten. Mr. Reitinger?
Here.
Ms. Russell? No, and Mr. Webb? No. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We are trying to get the echo a little under control, so sorry for that, but let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. So please rise and join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And I would seek a motion regarding tonight's agenda.
This chair, I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Ms. Goodell?
Yes, Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Dimick?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Litten isn't here. Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Russell? No, and Mr. Webb? Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I'm still hearing. Okay, that I think that echo is from me. We can't hear. I think someone else has a microphone that's live. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Sorry for we were working out the sound issues. We've got that going. So I would like to just make a few opening remarks to set the stage for everyone tonight. As we shared on our school renaming website, public comment is being received this evening by Zoom. Community members who have signed up to speak have been given instructions on how to join the meeting when their number is called. We will proceed as we do at all of our school board meetings. Under policy BDDH, public participation at school board meetings. As chair, it's my job and I'm responsible for ruling on such matters as the appropriateness of the subject being presented and the length of time for such presentations. Please note that the sole topic for tonight is a school renaming question before us. We know there are a number of other important topics outside of the school renaming, and we certainly invite the public to continue to submit those comments to the school board by sending written statements to school board clerk Marty Goodell at goodellm@fccps.org. Those statements will be disseminated to the school board, and we will be reading those into the record during school board meetings until until such time as we adopt a different model, and we will do that as we have done in the past. The school board has determined this meeting this evening will be at most four hours long and will continue until 10:00 PM or until we've heard from all community members who have signed up to speak, whichever happens first, and we almost certainly will be able to hear from everyone. We have posted on our school renaming website the previous public comments we've received related to school renaming, and we will continue to post updates as those come in. Pursuant to school board policy BDDH, each speaker will have three minutes to share their thoughts with the board. And what we will do as we go to each person is I'll ask each speaker to begin by stating their name and their address, and again, reminding everyone that the comments need to be relevant to the issue of renaming either of the two schools. We will go in the order that was published on the web today. I have a speaker list here in front of me with everyone's number and name, and I'll just be calling each next person as we go along. And at three minutes, we will end that person's time, and then we will move to the next speaker, or if the person finishes before three, we'll move on. So the last thing I just want to say is just a reminder to everyone that to please know, the board is not going to be responding directly to any comments tonight, but each comment is being taken into thoughtful consideration. And we're really grateful for our community members who are taking the time to share their thoughts with us. Just reminder that the board is not endorsing or supporting any comment that's submitted to us, but we're very happy to hear what you have to say. So with that background, I'd like to welcome our first speaker tonight, Constance Mead, speaker number one.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. Please go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so, so much for taking the time to listen to me speak tonight. I really appreciate it. My name is Cece Mead, or Constance Mead, and I am the student body president at George Mason High School. And I'm here tonight, not on behalf of the student council, not on behalf of the students, because that would be unfair of me to lose their voices. However, tonight I'm speaking for myself and many of my peers who share my same thoughts and concerns. There is inherent racism in education, and George Mason High School is no exception to that. The name change is incredibly important, but we can't stop there. I'm really afraid that this change will be our one move of performative activism. We can't fix those external issues without fixing the internal ones as well. With the building of this new high school, we have an incredible opportunity to reflect on our city's past, present, and future. So let this new high school be a fresh start. Let it be a stepping stone for further change for a to achieve a more equitable, inclusive, and anti-racist environment and place. What kind of example are we setting for our future and for our children by letting these men represent us? These men who, yes, contributed to the foundation of America, which contains some good, but it also contains a lot of bad. They participated in generations of pain for an entire section of America. Are we going to choose to let these men represent our community of changemakers, of students, of leaders? The same men who knowingly participated in generations of pain? Our changing of the name, I think that a lot of times I hear the argument that it might erase history, that it we should leave the name for the sake of history. And my response to that is simply, it won't. We live 20 minutes from the Lincoln Memorial, from the Thomas Jefferson Memorial, I mean, and America will always choose to tell these men's stories. American textbooks, literature, art, music will always and forever tell these men's stories. Our changing of the name will not erase or change history. It will demonstrate that we have learned from our history and that we've chosen not to let these men represent our future and our community of students. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mead, and we will move on to our next speaker, speaker number two, Lyndie Hockenberry. Lyndie, if you're speaking, we cannot hear you. I think you're on mute.
There we go. We connected now?
We can hear you now. Please go ahead.
Hey, good. I didn't unmute. Anyway, thank you so much for listening to the citizens of Falls Church. And as most everybody knows, I'm a long-term teacher up at both at TJ and up at George Mason High School. And I'm speaking in response to not change the name of either of our schools. And with those words that I will now deliver, our Declaration of Independence and our Constitution are most the most revered and the precious bedrock of our constitutional democracy that we enjoy to this very day. Our founding fathers were men of courage and foresight. The Declaration of Independence was signed by 56 of these patriots. Forty-one were slave owners. Our Constitution was signed by 55 of these great leaders. Twenty-five were slave owners. To say that this was not inclusionary of all people at that time would not be true. Slaves, women, men of no means were not included. Can we say now that this we believe this was wrong? Yes. But should these American patriots now be denied some recognition within our country, the greatest on earth? Since our inception, our country has been able to make changes to our constitution within this framework with the basic ideals of fairness, quality, equality, and liberty. Change is a powerful word. What are the reasons for change? To improve, work at making ideas or thinking things better? Or in these times, does it mean to deny or just to change because we are unhappy with something? As a nation, we've always prided ourselves on learning from the many mistakes, of which we have many, of the past. Right now, we're in the midst of a historic movement of change, of racial inequalities, and for improving the rights for all. Therefore, I do not believe that the symbolic change of two of our wonderful schools' names is what we should do. Change should become within our society, within curriculum, within our teaching, and most of all, within our values, the city of Falls Church. And what's in a name? The Thomas Jefferson was originally the Oak Street School when we acquired it from Fairfax County and our start of our wonderful school system. And it then became Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Before that, our very, very first school in Falls Church was the Jefferson Institute. And as the school board knows, as you're marching behind that wonderful set of set of bells that you march behind every Memorial Day and such, you know that that was our beginning. You know, we have just wonderful schools. We have Jesse Thackeray. We have we have Mount Daniel, named after Orlando.
Dr. Anderson, that's three minutes.
Oh, three minutes. Anyway, thank you so.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Hockenberry. Thank you very much, Ms. Goodell. And we'll now move on to speaker number three and Rossley Cosbell.
How about now?
We can hear you just fine. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I am a parent of three kids in the school system, Mount Daniel, Thomas Jefferson, and MEH, and I am here to make three points. First, I am in favor of changing the name of the high school, just as we are not bound by the old building's design. I believe the new building provides the right opportunity for our community to select a new name that highlights the values that we cherish today. Second, I oppose changing the name of Thomas Jefferson Elementary because there is no new building, and I don't believe there is a reason to change it. And finally, I support adding context to the founding fathers, but not in concluding that they were so flawed that they no longer deserve any recognition, including on buildings. Like the Shel Silverstein poem, "The Zebra Question," which starts, "I asked the zebra, are you black with white stripes or white with black stripes?" I don't know if Thomas Jefferson was a good person who did bad things or a bad person who did good things, but I do know that the Declaration of Independence is a founding document of this country, and that it has been an inspiration to millions of people over generations, and that that is worth honoring. It is also worth teaching that a man who engaged in evil actions could produce such a document. Walt Whitman famously wrote, "I contain multitudes," and I suggest we teach those multitudes to our imperfect children in hopes that they will also strive to create something more perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cosbell. We'll now move on to speaker number four, Allison Kuchma.
Okay, I'm here. It takes a moment for the thing to swirl. My name is Allison Kuchma. Can you hear me, I guess?
We can hear you.
Okay, my name's Allison Kuchma. I live at 813 Fulton Avenue, and I wanted to speak tonight in opposition of changing the name of George Mason High School. I'm a little frustrated. I feel like it's a done deal. The website says this is a name-changing process, so a renaming. So you've all everyone has decided that that's the way it's going. So I'm a little frustrated with things that I perceive to be more on the order of virtue signaling rather than content. I would rather that our education dollars and your efforts and your meetings go to what happens inside the building. So if you're going to do this, I have a request. If you would pledge to keep track of all the money that you spend and all the time that you spend, do you understand that most of our school budget, we buy time? Dr. Noonan, you know, his hourly rates, $175 an hour, probably more than that, but there's various hourly rates and keep track, pledge to keep track of every hour that is spent on this renaming, and dollar for dollar, please match that for the minorities that go inside our building, because that's what really matters. Has anyone been to the state website recently and looked at some of the the pass rates for our students? I thought maybe this was going to be a where you would see my face. I was going to show you some scores, but I can certainly read them. The writing scores for white students, the pass rates in 2019 for SOLs was 93% pass if you're white. Black students, it's 79%. History, 97% white students pass. Black students, it's 75%. Science, white students, 94%. Black students, 82%. Math, white students, 94% passing. Black students, 82%. Reading, white students, 95% passing. Black students, 78% passing. Students with disabilities, reading, 54% passing. English language learners, 32%. This is what I think matters, what happens inside our building. I don't, if you change the outside, you're changing a banner. What I really want you to focus on is changing lives. It doesn't matter what you call our high school. What matters is what you put your time into and what happens inside the building. And I think that's what you should focus your time on, and I think focusing on this is, you know, virtue signaling, but it doesn't change lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kuchma. We'll move on to our next speaker, number five, Gordon Thies.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, indeed. Please go.
Oh, great. Thank you, Greg. Gordon Thies, 802 Ridge Place. School board members, thank you so much for listening to community input on the school renaming issue. We have a building that's brand new and almost ready to go. I think it's reasonable to consider who should be honored as its namesake. And in 2020, it's also reasonable to consider whether the legacy names from the city's founding should be continued. In the 1950s, the city named its schools after prominent Virginia revolutionaries, Madison, Jefferson, and Mason. For every new building constructed or acquired since, the school board has changed the name or chosen the name of a prominent Falls Church citizen or geography, Henderson, Thackeray, Mount Daniel. In 2020, we're keenly aware that Jefferson and Mason owned people. Their livelihoods and education were only possible because of the work of their slaves. Jefferson fathered children with a teenage slave. Mason allowed some of the slaves to be executed. They both wrote how people of color were lesser than white people. They were racist. Should we continue to name schools after slavers? And I'll also mention that George Mason was not a founding father because he did not sign the Constitution, and he fought against its ratification. But here are the arguments that we've heard at the last meeting as why you should preserve the names. It costs too much. It erases history. The schools don't teach a full history. A new name won't correct it, so why bother? Citizens arguing for a change are elitist with an agenda. These men had serious flaws, but are still deserving. George Mason is a well-known high school at colleges. There's a pandemic, and what's next? Removal of the Jefferson Memorial? Do any of these points resonate with the board? Do they resonate with you personally? If you preserve the names, how would you answer a student asking the following questions? Why did you continue to name our school after slaveholders when given the opportunity to change them? Why did you choose money over action? Did keeping the names actually preserve memories for an alumnus? Was the reputation of George Mason High School more important than doing the right thing? Was it too hard to imagine our counselors reaching out to colleges to explain why we changed the name? Why did the school board in 2020 choose not to acknowledge systemic racism inherent in continuing to honor a slaveholder? Now is the time to change the names. Follow the lead of educators around the country in removing the names of racists from educational buildings. Follow the recommendation of local civil rights leader Ed Henderson. Answer the plea of the editorial board of Alasso. And Constance, earlier tonight, she couldn't have said it better. Recognize that there are better people to honor in 2020. Change the names. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We'll move on next to our speaker number six, Molly Herman. Ms. Herman, I think you're still muted.
Hi there. How about now?
There we go. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. Um, let's see here. Sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. My name's Molly Herman, and I live at 318 West Rosemary Lane. I have two sixth graders and a junior who have all been in Falls Church Public Schools their whole academic careers. I also own a business in the city and had the pleasure of working with some of you while producing Mason's virtual graduation this year. I've been following these conversations and I've noticed that several people have brought up the idea that the issues facing the schools in terms of equality are so vast that changing school names would only be a Band-Aid or a meaningless token. I followed the renaming of Jeb Stuart High School with interest. It really resonated with me that no person of color should have to go to a school named for a person who fought to keep their ancestors enslaved or who owned slaves. Perhaps the impact of changing the name would be unquantifiable. Perhaps white decision-makers are not really able to comprehend that impact, but rather than a Band-Aid, I believe it would be a good faith effort. I think words matter and that it would be a start. This issue has sparked a lot of reactions from the many expressions of admiration for George Mason and Thomas Jefferson, the suggestion that we should use their slaveholding as a teaching moment, feelings of sentimentality from alumni, anecdotal evidence that black friends think changing the name is unnecessary, concerns about the costs involved. It was suggested that new sports equipment is a more urgent need, but I think the common thread here is evaluating the situation in the same way white people in this country have always done, from a privileged perspective. One speaker shared the notion that slavery was acceptable in the early days of our nation. That is true. Absolutely. It was socially acceptable for white people. But you know who never thought slavery was acceptable at any time? African Americans. We've also heard that the records of Mason and Jefferson were deemed acceptable when the schools were founded. This should be acceptable to us today, therefore. But I don't think that is a measure with any merit, as the city itself was incorporated in 1948 in an effort to avoid desegregating schools. And Mason was named shortly after in 1952 as an anti-integration venture, which was successful. Our schools remained segregated until 1962, seven years after Brown versus Board of Education. Others have spoken about erasing Virginia's history, but as a documentary filmmaker, I know that the history that we remember is selective. If we care about Virginia's history, we should be honoring the Pato Womack tribe that predated the founding fathers by thousands of years. We all know the truth, that a name isn't given to a school as a teaching moment. It is given to honor the namesake. This isn't an argument about Jefferson or Mason's contributions to history. It's a chance to leave the past behind us and make a statement to our students that all are welcome. I really appreciate the chance to share my thoughts tonight. I hope the school board will put privilege aside and look at this issue through the eyes of a black student walking through the doors of a gorgeous new high school and thinking, Mason owned slaves. We need some brave leadership to move us away from the city's segregationist roots. Our history may be checkered, but the future is ours to write. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Herman. We'll move on to speaker number seven, Audra Kokles Plummer, and I'm sorry if I've said your name wrong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Hi, everyone. My name is Audra Kokles Plummer. See, that's very close. I live at 403 Jackson Street in Falls Church, and I am a parent of three children, two who attend Thomas Jefferson Elementary and one at MEH. Thank you, Dr. Noonan and the school board, for allowing me the opportunity to share my perspective tonight. I'll start by saying I am strongly in favor of changing the names of both the elementary and high school, as are my three children, my family, and most friends and neighbors that I speak to about it. Some have argued that the two men that our schools are named after and their actions should be taken in context of the times. I believe we will have countless opportunities to teach our children about these men and the importance of their contributions to our country with context in our classrooms. These men were not flawed. They were racist. And you simply don't name schools after people who are racist. Slave owning counts. I want to quote author Dennis Childs, who said, "Slavery is not some sort of dinosaur-age pre-capitalist system." Slavery, rather than being the exception, the original sin we have gotten away from, is actually foundational to our current predicaments of police brutality and terrorism, of legal repression, of political and economic disempowerment, of lack of educational access. These things that people find so important right now are grounded in the original problems associated with slavery. I say to not recognize every part of that history is to close off solutions moving forward. While a name change can't eradicate the centuries of hatred and racism, it is a start. Language.
Oops. We appear to have lost a connection with Ms. Plummer, but we're working to bring her back in.
Okay, I think I'm back.
Ms. Plummer, I'm sorry. We lost a connection with you, but please go ahead and continue.
Okay, I'm almost done. While I believe a name change can eradicate the centuries of hatred and racism, it is a start. Language, our words and name, they represent the entire thought process of the time period for which it was used. For generations to come, the name we choose for our schools, and more importantly, the reasons why, will reflect the kind of people we were, and most importantly, those that our children aspire to be. Dr. Ibram X. Kendi said, "There is no in-between in this space, no neutrality in this." Either we're furthering and reproducing this unequal society, or we're part of the struggle against it. Let our decisions and actions show we are part of the struggle against it. Changing our school name names is anti-racist. It does align with our mission and values as a public Ivy school. The cost is minimal. The timing is good with the new building going up. It would bring recognition to the school for something that is in the hearts and minds of everyone right now, and it is the right thing to do to build inclusive and equitable schools and community where students and educators thrive. It's been three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Plummer. We will move on to our eighth speaker, speaker number eight, Joel David Ratliff. I'm not seeing Joel David Ratliff on the left. All right, let's see. All right, then we will. We will go ahead and go forward to speaker number nine, David Snyder. All right, and I believe that Mr. Snyder had a message for us, and Ms. Goodell, if you wouldn't mind relaying that.
Yes, he said if he wasn't able to make it, it was because he needed to represent the city tonight at a Northern Virginia Transportation Commission Wamata Committee meeting. So he was hoping to be able to be here, but that's where he is.
All right. Thank you. Then we'll continue. Then we'll continue on to speaker number 10, Jamie Argento Rodriguez. And again, I hope I got your name right. Apologize if I got it wrong.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Dr. Noonan, esteemed members of the school board and fellow Falls Church City community members. My name is Jamie Argento Rodriguez and I live at 612 Poplar Drive. I am the parent of two Falls Church City Public School students, and I'm a longtime Falls Church City resident. I am also a proud graduate of George Mason University. I asked to speak with, before you this evening, to request that you vote to change the names of our schools. Because of the time limit, I reserve my longer comments for my written submission. But in response to the, to the following arguments against changing the names of the schools, I ask you to consider the following. The first argument is that Thomas Jefferson and George Mason are important parts of Virginia and US history. Changing the names of our schools does not disregard these accomplishments and the critical battles that they fought to secure our country's freedoms. However, their accomplishments were incomplete. They did not apply their notions of liberty to women, to African American people, to indigenous people, to people living in poverty. The list could go on. The work of examining our rights is endless, and we must continue to evolve. As a community, we should be careful not to allow contentment or complacency to stymie our progress. The second argument is that changing the names disrupts the status quo. This perspective is easy to understand, but I encourage us to think beyond our discomforts, our personal and institutional discomforts, the growing pains of progress, should not outweigh the changes that are necessary to recognize the human dignity and rights of every person in our community. Thirdly, the argument that changing the names is cost prohibitive. This may be the most troubling argument of all. Financial benefit was a central argument behind sustaining slavery as wealthy white male landowners benefited from the economics of enslaving other humans. More than a century and a half later, we should not adopt and promote the perspective that financial investment is an impediment to changing the names of our schools. As Falls Church celebrates its title as the wealthiest city in the United States, how are we going to respond at this watershed moment when the opportunity for change presents itself? How do we want our history to be written? I assure you that claiming that money stands in the way of creating and promoting an inclusive culture will not age well. I leave you with this. Sally Hemings was about the same age as my daughter, excuse me, a freshman at our high school, when Thomas Jefferson began years of sexual predation against her. Virginians and Americans have romanticized this power dynamic rather than address the truth. The wealthy white slave owner exerted his dominance over a black girl for his personal satisfaction with no regard for her liberty. While equipped with the power to free her, Thomas Jefferson greedily chose exploitation and personal gratification and never granted her freedom. In Falls Church City, we have asked thousands of little girls and boys to enter a building named after a man who did this to a child. Does that represent the values of our community? I implore the board and our community to maintain focus on the mission of our schools and to name the buildings in accordance with the standards and principles that we demand of and for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rodriguez. We will move on now to speaker number 11 on the list, Liz Hume.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, indeed.
Hi. Thank you so much for inviting the community to give comments. I'd like to say that I am strongly in favor of changing the names of both schools. The impacts of longstanding structural racism are inherent in the United States and have created deep and legitimate grievances since the founding of our nation. We have ignored and pretended that racism doesn't exist, and we have failed to address longstanding racism. And we don't need to look any farther than our own very liberal city of Falls Church City to see the impact of structural racism. It's time to right the historical and present wrongs. The murder of George Floyd was one of the latest sparks triggering an essential and urgent demand for action in the United States. We need an urgent and innovative rethinking of what we can do to convey new narratives of the past and positively influence our national identity moving forward. Jefferson and Mason were people. They were founding fathers, and they deserve to be in our history books for their achievements. But we also need to reconcile with the truth of who else they were. They didn't just have character flaws, which I've heard many people say. They enslaved people. We need to honor those who have made a positive difference in our community rather than those who perpetuated white supremacy and slavery. While renaming schools and highways is not a replacement for justice and will not fix racism, but it is a start and it's part of it. We can walk and chew gum at the same time. We can change the name of schools, and we can work to address racism even in our own very liberal city. We can be bold. We can start with also issuing, issuing an apology for segregation, like Loudoun County recently did. We can ensure our curriculum is immediately revised, like what's happening in other cities across the United States. I am currently working with organizations and schools in cities like Mobile, Alabama to ensure that the history courses are unsanitized and ensure women and people of color are also included positively. The cost has also been discussed as an issue. And especially now during COVID. However, if you want to know a city's value, look at their budgets and what they spend money on. When you're building a new school, it's the perfect time to put in a new gym floor and put up a new sign. If you don't change the name, then I highly recommend putting a big plaque or a statue or something out in front of the schools that give the accurate history of Thomas Jefferson and Mason, like they do now in Monticello. If you go to Monticello, they explain that Sally Hemings couldn't give consent to rape, that he didn't free his slaves because he was in massive debt. He loved French wine and building on his estate. And after he died, many of his slaves were sold and separated from their families. He only freed his own children. Richard Montgomery High School in Rockville, Maryland is going through something similar right now about their name.
It's been three minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hume. We'll move on to speaker number 12 on the list, Hal Littman.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Chairman Anderson, members of the school board and Dr. Noonan, I'm Hal Littman, 505 East Columbia Street. I object to these name changes because they are predicated on the idea that sufficient reason exists to warrant them because Jefferson and Mason owned slaves and exploited them in ways that although acceptable in their era are now looked upon with scorn. The name change issue came to my attention in June, and since then I've done my own research, engaged in discussions with city residents of all stripes, and thought long and hard about what I heard and read. Throughout this effort, I maintained an open mind, but in the end concluded the fact that Jefferson and Mason were slaveholders and behaved in ways viewed as completely unacceptable today does not at all outweigh the totality of their accomplishments and contributions as founding fathers. Quite literally, they helped lay the foundations on which our country was established and continues to evolve in pursuit of the more perfect union referred to in our Constitution's preamble. However much it has become a bone of contention these days for some to hear it said, Jefferson and Mason were men of their times. Slavery was the norm in the southern colonies and was also practiced in the northern colonies. In this sense, to look back on Jefferson and Mason in terms of current wokefulness is, in my opinion, misguided and does no service to the idea of changing our schools' names. A further concern is the question of where we draw the line in considering the implications of actions such as these name changes. If the fact that a founding father was a slaveholder is sufficient cause to change a school's name, why continue to call our local Jefferson Street by that name? And if the logic of a name change based on having been a slaveholder applies, is there a corresponding need to rename our city's Washington Street, since he too owned slaves? Indeed, should the name, names of all streets everywhere throughout the nation named Jefferson or Washington be changed? And what about the Jefferson Memorial and Washington Monument? Should they be renamed or even removed? Finally, I would be remiss if I didn't emphasize the overarching issue the name's change effort reflects, the undeniable need for racial justice and equity in our country. Clearly, we are at a crossroads of a long overdue reckoning with our past. But at the same time, as we try to respond, we are and will continue to be faced with an overwhelming array of thoughts, ideas, and actions. What I worry about and believe to be the case here is when we come to a decision to do something, will that decision be driven by reflexive passion rather than considered thought? In short, I believe we must strive to be guided in what we do by reason over the passionate feelings of the moment, which in this instance means resisting the impulse to change the names of our local schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Littman. We'll move on now to speaker number 13, Joe Green.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me now, then?
Yes, indeed.
Great. Thank you. I'm Joe Green at 523 Poplar Drive. As we've heard and continue to hear from proponents of name change, their argument continues to be based on a simplistic tabloid version of history that fails to recognize the realities of that era or today. Perhaps a better example is the repeated statements by proponents that Mason was not a founder who did not sign the Constitution and fought against its ratification. Unset is why he opposed the Constitution. That is because it did not initially include a Bill of Rights or do more to outlaw slavery. These are facts. According to the Center for Civic Education, what is significant in the historical context of the time is not that the liberty-loving revolutionaries allowed slavery to survive, but that they, even those who profited directly from the institution, went so far in condemning it, confining it, and setting in motion the forces that would ultimately destroy it. The duty of this school board and community is to ingrate and engrain in our students the very ideals that Jefferson and Mason represent. As I said last week, these values are the one thing that unify us as a country, that make us all Americans. The board and this community should not give into shallow, feel-good, reflexive arguments that ignore historical realities to fit into the cancel culture ethos of the moment. We're better than that, and this school board should make that clear. George Mason University is leading the way on these issues and provides a wonderful example of how this community and school board should be looking at the issue, as explained by the new and first black president of GMU. Should we then now continue to recognize George Mason and other founders as brilliant and devoted patriots? Or should we condemn them for ignoring the basic ideals by which they define this country? We should do both because Mason is the very embodiment of the duality of America, which we celebrate for its insistence on liberty and justice for all, even though it enslaved and segregated its own people for much of its history. We can neither run away from the atrocities committed throughout this nation's history nor from the fact that the core principles established by founders like Mason, like fairness, equality, and liberty, were also the foundational principles employed by the civil rights and other movements. At George Mason University, by keeping Mason in our name, we keep both lessons of his life active in our own quest to form a more perfect union and a better university. I can think of no better than to follow GMU's lead here. Keep the names. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Green. We'll move on to speaker number 14, Robbie Worth.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank Chairman Anderson and the school board members, and particularly Marty Goodell, who's done a tremendous job of coordinating this effort, well-run process that you have. I spoke last week on some of the attributes of George Mason and his words and actions, that why they set him apart from others. And the, the previous speaker, Mr. Green, eloquently spoke on why he is different from other of the founding fathers and that he actually led, led an effort that was defeated to, to put freeing the slaves in the Constitution, and that was defeated by a coalition of northern and southern states. And the northern states really carried the day. So George Mason fought for the freedom of, of slaves, and he should be honored for that, if nothing else. I want to bring to your attention, however, that the, the, there, there are other aspects of changing the name that need to be considered when, when doing this. First of all, if you're going to change a name, I totally disagree with naming it after anybody. It needs to be named after a, a place or a thing, not, not somebody's name because we're not, all of us are not perfect. And you never know when looking back on history, how things may change. I was at George Mason High School in 1964, 1965, when the schools were integrated. And there were three families that came to George Mason, that black families whose houses were on Hillwood Avenue, and the city ran through their, their property. And they were also in Fairfax. So they all elected to come to George Mason because of the welcoming environment that we had towards those new students that came there. And we, they were very successful at high school, and there was no sign at all of any, any prejudice or discrimination with any of the black families that came to George Mason during that period. The, the name runs very deep. We, as I mentioned before, I was with the George Mason Alumni Association. It's a matter of pride and honor to have graduated from George Mason. I don't think I would have gotten into the colleges that I applied to if it wasn't for the name of George Mason. And we're one of the few schools, I think, in the nation that has an actual active alumni association. What I'm really worried about here is that if we, in the future, keep the name, the George Mason Alumni Association, will we be viewed as, as racist? And how are we going to hand, handle all that aspect of it? Most of the people that are playing on Facebook right now commenting on this are against the name change. And, you know, we've put on five all-class reunions. We, we, classes have different reunions, all in the name of George Mason High School. You also have the George Mason High School Hall of Fame. What are we going to do there? Are we going to have two Hall of Fames?
It's been three minutes.
Anyway.
Thank you very much, Mr. Worth. We will, we'll move on now to speaker number 15, Tom Johnson.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me okay? Okay. Tom Johnson, 152 Reeves Place, father of three recent graduates of George Mason High School. This costly, divisive, and unnecessary process while our schools, based on unprecedented health, academic, and budget challenges, should end immediately with the retention of both names, combined with a full and fair presentation of the relevant history in an improved curriculum, information on the legacy kiosks in the new George Mason High School building, a detailed plaque in each entrance lobby, as already mentioned, and other measures that unify instead of divide the community. Overall, starting with the comments of June 9th, more than two-thirds of the public comments have opposed name changes. And I would ask the board to read or reread those comments. In addition to the July 1st letter from the new African-American president of George Mason University quoted last week, his August 8th editorial for NBC is posted on the renaming website and should be carefully read by every member of the school board. Mr. Green has already mentioned the key quotations from that, from that editorial. I would simply say that GMU, its Board of Trustees, and overall community have done their homework. In deciding to keep the name George Mason and provide all interested party, parties with his complete story, they have made an educated decision and taken an educational, rather than a misguided, political approach. Name changes would be wrong in all respects. Wrong academically or educationally is a modern version of book burning. Wrong historically because as two of Virginia's foremost black educators, Dr. Washington and Dr. Julian Hader of the University of Richmond have noted, there is a huge distinction between Confederate leaders who tried to destroy our country and founding fathers who created it and laid the foundation for abolishing slavery. Wrong financially and wrong practically for reasons many opponents have cited. Proponents of name changes focus on one fact about a way of life that Mason and Jefferson were born into, while disregarding their extraordinary contributions, sacrifices, and risks undertaken that actually laid the groundwork for ending slavery. In the case of Mason, as mentioned, the proponents conveniently failed to mention that he refused to sign the Constitution because it did not include a Bill of Rights or immediately ban the slave trade. As Dr. Terrence Woolsey told us in his June 30th comment, he's class of 68 at Mason, "Let's do a better job of teaching history rather than deleting it." One speaker last week correctly described the terrible messages to our students that a school board decision to rename one or both schools would send. It would do a lasting disservice to our students and their future academic and real-world endeavors by teaching them that it is okay to cut corners, to use a blunt instrument, to look for easy and simplistic answers to complex questions and to appease.
It's been three minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. We'll move on to speaker number 16, Stephen Hill.
Oh, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry, I had to reload here. Hi, Stephen Hill, I'm at 504 Greenwich Street in Falls Church. I have three children who have been in the Falls Church Schools. One, my youngest, is currently at Mary Ellen Henderson. I spoke here last week, so I appreciate the opportunity to speak again. I really have nothing to add to the excellent comments that you've heard presented tonight in opposition to the proposed name change, which I also oppose. So I'd like to use my time to address some of the arguments that have been presented, both in the, in the oral and the written comments. And, and one argument in particular that I think needs to be addressed is that the contributions of Jefferson and Mason to our country, and I do believe that those are contributions that do merit, you know, continuing use of their name on, on monuments and schools and streets and whatever. But that the contributions can be dismissed because the ulterior motive in supporting independence was not freedom from the British Empire, but rather was the preservation of slavery in the 13 colonies from what was feared to be imminent legal abolition within the British Empire. And this results from a legal case in England. This is an inaccurate representation of our founding. It in fact comes out of the introductory essay to the New York Times 1619 Project and has been roundly criticized by credible historians across the board, including prominent liberal historians such as Sean Willens of Princeton and Gordon Wood at Brown. The historical record in fact reveals exactly the opposite, that British rule was actually a hindrance to certain colonies' efforts to restrict slavery and that once free of the British yoke, several states quickly, several newly independent states quickly moved to abolish the institution. Indeed, our country's independence and the ideals espoused by founders, including Jefferson, including Mason, fed directly into the abolition movements that took off shortly thereafter, both within the United States and within the British Empire. It therefore is a measure of the greatness of Jefferson and Mason and why they stood, they should still be celebrated and why they still merit naming of schools, of streets, of cities, et cetera. That their writings and their ideals led to the destruction of and far outlived the institution for which they would be condemned to history's ash pile. So I hope that the school board will, 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 will listen to the, the voices in opposition to this, this proposed name change. This, this move is, is ahistoric, it is simplistic, it, it will result in the elimination of these two individuals from our history. Going to, you know, reading them in a history book will, you know, to our students really have no more relevance than any other person out of history. So I hope that you reject this proposal and that you are, you keep their names on our buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. We'll move on to our speaker number 17, Susan Schick Link.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me? Great, thank you. Good evening, my name is Susan Link and I graduated from George Mason High School in 1986. My parents still live at 960 North Rochester Street where I grew up, so I visit Falls Church often. I am opposed to the name change. I'm frustrated that the survey firm was not asked to contact the thousands of student and faculty alumni. That inclusion would have produced a better representation of the past, present, and future school community. Second, I'm an architect. It would have been possible to preserve or relocate a portion of the existing school. For example, the old gym could have been moved and integrated into the new design. I emailed Kristin Michael and Sev Pideo and asked if there was a plan to salvage or reuse any part of the physical existing high school. I haven't heard back yet. So it feels like a double whammy to take away both the building and the name. The name George Mason appears on diplomas, awards, class rings, letter sweaters, and sports jerseys. People keep these things because they bring happy memories. No great tragedy occurred at George Mason High School. A name change might make sense for a place like Columbine or Sandy Hook. This school instead has a decades-old reputation for academic excellence and being a school family where students are known by name. The University of Virginia was built using slave labor and was the site of a white supremacist rally three years ago. I'm sure you all remember that. But the university did not change its name. Instead, it chose to build a memorial to enslaved laborers which opened just this spring. Neither UVA nor George Mason University are changing their names. Instead, they are changing their curricula to grow and evolve with the needs and identities of their students rather than erasing their names and their histories with a big eraser. I will close by sharing two posts from the high school alumni Facebook page. Keep the name. Changing the name will not change the past. What was done is done and we need to learn from it. Don't sweep it under the rug by destroying things you don't like. FCCPS school names have a great reputation for learning and are sought after. It doesn't do any good to change the name if you don't first change the mind. Educate and teach. That is what a building is for, not a social statement. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Link. Dr. Noonan, do we have either Joel David Ratliff or Mr. Snyder, Dave Snyder back?
No, we do not.
Okay, at this point then, we have heard from all of the people who registered in advance to speak tonight. And I would just like to take a moment to say thank you to all of those speakers on behalf of the board. We really do appreciate you taking the time to come and talk with us tonight and share your thoughts on this important topic. And we are listening and thinking carefully about this. I just want to take also a moment to say thank you to our staff team who worked really hard to, to support us through these hearings and in building our, building the renaming question website and all the work that's related to, related to that. And especially thank you to, tonight for running things. Despite some last minute technical problems, we overcame, so. I would like to remind everyone, so tonight is the last public hearing on this topic. But our, our website with all of our public, the comments that the public has made, all of the videos from our prior meetings, information related to the question that the board is considering is still active and will continue to be active. We are definitely still accepting, receiving, and want to continue to receive public comment. You can send email to renamingcomments, that's all one word, at fccps.org. There's instructions on the web for this as well. And those comments are all being put together, they'll be posted online for everyone to see and for the board to consider. And I, we want to make sure that you know that that is still out there and will continue to be so. So with that, I want to say thank you again to everyone. Thank you to everyone on this end who, who worked hard and the flexibility that everyone showed tonight. And we are adjourned for tonight. Thank you.